All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education regular meeting. Tonight is Monday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. We are live in the Brandywine High School auditorium, also broadcasting via Zoom. Ms. Harris, may I please have a roll call? Here?
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Heller to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Pigeon, second, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, let's kick off the night with our high school presentations in our efforts to keep the order rotating. We'll start with Mount Pleasant High School, Dylan Kim and May Wong.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Brandywine School District Board, and members of the Brandywine School District Community. My name is Dylan Kim. My vice president is currently not here tonight, and I am the Student Council President of Mount Pleasant High School. This past weekend, the Mount Pleasant G R T C program held its third annual Military Ball at the Talleville Fire Company. The achievements of the program were celebrated in a formal military-style event. Organizational Military Awards were presented, and a change-of-command ceremony was conducted for the incoming leadership. Jazz band members supported the event with background music, and we'd like to congratulate the Green Ice Battalion for their success throughout the school year. The G R T C robotics team competed at the Delmar Regional Championships, a tournament to qualify for V R C Worlds. Our eighty-nine oh-three K team won the entire tournament and qualified for V R C Worlds for the second year in a row. Last year, they had gone to Worlds through the tournament but didn't win, but this time they were first-place tournament champions. We'd like to recognize once again the explosive growth of the G R T C robotics program and wish them good luck in May when they travel to Dallas, Texas. This past month, the Black Student Union hosted its annual Black History Month Assembly. Our guests played music by Black artists from the Civil Rights Era and held a live concert by professional singers to accompany the presentation. We appreciate the Black Student Union for continuing to bring awareness to Black history, not only during the month of February, but year-round. In the past week, same as the Military Ball, Mount held eight Mount students attended the Black Students Summit at St. Georgia's High School, and our very own Nea Coverdale sat on the Planning Committee and Board. A great day was had by all. Black Student Union again and Girls Empowered are hosting a large evening event on Friday, April twenty-eighth called Greek Night Step Showcase. This event will include African-American sororities and fraternities, food trucks, student performances, a photo area, DJ, and more. T Q cells open for students at a discounted rate in April. We're excited to see what this year's Greek Night Step Showcase has in store for us. This past week, Mount Pleasant held a student versus staff basketball game as a N T S S tier-one incentive. Teachers won both games against students and even held a cheerleading routine for a halftime show. It was interesting to say the least. We are grateful for the fun time we had. It was really, really nice. I would like to recognize the M P H S drama program for their preparation of Broadway's Frozen to be held from March thirtieth through April first. We highly recommend that members of our community come out to watch this once-in-a-lifetime production for Mount Pleasant High School. We're the only school in Delaware authorized to reproduce this in the school theater, and it's coming, I don't know, in two weeks. So I'm really excited to see what they got for us. Six of our very own Green Knights recently passed a Certified Nursing Assistant exam after taking a dual enrollment course at Del Tech throughout the school year. We're very proud of their accomplishments and look forward to great things for them. The Unified Basketball Team went to the Bob Conference Center to play in the championship game. We played a tough game, coming up short to Apo. We're proud of our team for making it so far. As always, our Mount Pleasant High School community would like to thank the school board for their continued efforts to provide a high-quality education for us all. Thank you, and we are open to questions at this time.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I guess I'll have a question of each one of our high school reporters. I had the opportunity to come to your Joint Student Council event last, a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to ask, at the end of the event, you guys were discussing a potential fundraising event for the Be Positive Foundation, so I just wanted to ask where you guys were on that.
So our fundraising effort for the Joint Student Council as a district, we are planning to host a community event, like a barbecue cookout right here at Brandywine, I believe. It's gonna be mid-May after exams so that people can come out, have fun, and support the Be Positive organization. It's the Andrew McDonald Foundation, fighting childhood cancer all around the world. They've done great groundbreaking research, and we're honored to partner with them to start a tradition at Brandywine School District.
And. I thought, I had a great time participating, and I thought all of the students through Joint Student Council exemplified excellence. So thank you for your role in that as a leader, and you guys are gonna do great things.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Great, thank you, Dylan. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Brandywine High School Bobby Bear.
Hi, Board. So at Brandywine, we had our Vex Robotics Team. They earned spots on the U.S. Championship and National Championship. They'll be going to Iowa this month and then Dallas, Texas in April. Two of our students, Jonathan Pei and Anna John, won the P H O Physics Exam to get a spot on the U.S. Physics Olympiad Team. Multi-John was, she presented a project at the twenty-eighth Newcastle County Science Fair and won her division, and now she'll be moving on to the Regionals in April. We have Winter Sports that just concluded. Shout out to Rachel Bockroth. She broke the pool record and, I think, the record for her event that she swam. She did a really good job at states. The Samsung Team, or the Samsung Solve For Tomorrow Challenge Team won for the state, and we are the one and only public school in Delaware to receive this, and they will be moving to the national one. We have a culinary department. They're doing a lot of different things and fundraisers. One of them, they did an M R E Chop Challenge with the National Guard, and they won third place in it. And this is the first year that the National Guard hasn't had this, so it's a really big win for us, especially actually getting involved in more culinary things as the years progress. So shout out to them. As our Joint Student Council, we are doing a Be Positive Foundation fundraiser in mid-May, and us at Brandywine are gonna promoting the donations through emails so that students, it's already a document, so they'll just send it out to family members, friends, anyone to receive donations. It will also be promoting it through social media. There will be a friendly competition between the three schools as to how much money we can raise, and the winner will get a trophy. Emphasis on the friendly part. And right now, the spring sports have started. We had our first five-ball game today against Salazy Anum, and I believe a baseball game against Concord. And then tomorrow, we got girls across, track this week starts. I think that's about it. So, any questions?
I'll just ask you if there's anything that we can do as a board to support you for your Joint Student Council efforts with the fundraiser. Please reach out and let us know.
Awesome. We will definitely get back to that question. We would definitely like to have a meeting with all you guys eventually at some point. It's definitely on the agenda.
Great, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Concord High School, Mohammed Uden and Tassine Akhan.
All right, good evening, School District Board, teachers and families. My name is Mohammed Adin, Student Council President of Concord High School, and tonight I am accompanied by the Vice President of Concord High School Student Council, Tassine Akhan. So in the months of February and March, we have been seen very busy. Of course, Concord has always been doing something productive. We're always like that. We're always that school. One of the biggest things that we want to, we executed, sorry, was circle talks. Teachers and administrators, I'm sure you know, but circle talks are essentially an activity where individuals of groups get together, discuss topics, and essentially get to voice their opinions. At Concord, we, of course, strive for community, and one of the things that we want to really push towards is emphasizing student voice. So right here, we had tables in our cafeteria with poster boards, markers, and everything with six individual topics. These topics include, excellent. These topics include things such as this. They obviously go from hallway behavior all the way to L G B T Q rights. And essentially, students got to discuss things that we thought were the biggest issues at Concord. We had a lot. We had a very heavy discussion on these topics, and it went really well. After these, after the discussion concluded, we actually admitted a survey for students. Around thirty to forty students attended these circle talks, and we got lots of results. Excellent. And these are some of the results. One of the questions was that, what is the biggest problem at Concord High School? According to these results, school inclusivity was the biggest problem. As we've been striving for community throughout the entire year, we've been really, we were really shocked at this statistic. Following the statistics, sorry, was school lunch environment as well as L G B T Q rights. But school inclusivity, we thought we were doing so well at it, yet obviously the students don't think so. So seeing this and analyzing this problem, we came up with a plan. Excellent. So one of the things that we actually executed this past month was the Mental Health Awareness Compliment Project. Essentially, we gathered every single name of students, teachers, and staff throughout the building. It totaled to around a thousand two hundred compliments, and we personalized, wrote their names, and hand-wrote compliments that were taped up around the school. These compliments got to brighten each other's days and kind of spread positivity throughout the entire school. Here's some more examples. And that, and we wanted to further that community positive with some all-inclusive lollipops.
Go back, please, sorry. So continuing on with the all-inclusive lollipops, we gave one lollipop to each student in the school, so about like a thousand, a thousand one hundred lollipops to raise awareness for students who have disabilities and students with disabilities to make them feel more included in the school. So as you can see, all-inclusive. Our school's motto is all in, Concord all in. So for these students with disabilities, we put the message all-inclusive on all of our lollipops to have them read it, to go include everybody, including students who with disabilities who did feel left out. Continuing on, we had our Black Student Union Black Love Kickback, which was celebrating Black History Month with over a hundred participants, as you can see. Lots of music, cultural foods. We also had a guest speaker who spoke about mental health and stuff like that, food trucks, activities like musical chairs and Uno. There was also prizes involved as well. This was, this was not like a closed event. It was open to all students in the community because we, of course, wanted to be open for everybody. And they're also, the B S U is also planning their Melanin Hangout in May, which will showcase artistic expression throughout the school. Continuing on, as the month of Ramadan is coming right around the corner this Wednesday, Concord High School is also trying to be inclusive to Muslim students in the school as well. So we're beginning to host Friday Jumu'ah prayers, which is basically, for those who aren't, who don't know, is like a Sunday service, but for Muslims and Muslim students and stuff like that. So this will be on Fridays around twelve o'clock or one o'clock, and we'll just be praying and then going back to class, which won't take more than fifteen, twenty minutes. And we'll also be creating a safe space for students during lunches so they can not sit around food for those thirty minutes and go somewhere else and relax with other people as well. And then moving on to our Science Olympiad Team, as you can see with all the medals around their neck, we are the second public school in the state after placements, ninth place overall in all the schools. And in our individual events, we had three first places, one second, and a third-place event. Next, we're moving on to Legally Blonde. That was this weekend. I had the honor of performing in the pit this weekend. It was a lot of fun. It was an amazing performance. We had, I believe, eight to nine hundred people attending this weekend, and we had about thirteen thousand dollars in profit, which is a huge amount, which we're going to give, like, which is gonna go to next year's productions and stuff like that to make it even better.
Next slide. We also concluded our annual Deca Dodgeball Tournament. Congratulations to the winning team. Unfortunately, it wasn't my team, but congratulations to the juniors. They also won last year's tournament, and it was a really great event. We had lots of family, friends, and other members of our community joining, coming out and enjoying this tournament. And last but not least, our Spring Morp. So we wanted to schedule another spring, sorry, another dance as we concluded our homecoming as well as our winter ball. We usually tend to have a spring dance, and this dance is gonna be a Spring Morp. If you can't, if you didn't know, it's prom backwards, and obviously since prom is very formal, very suit and tie, long dresses and gowns, Morp's gonna be the exact opposite. It's gonna be really fun clothing, neon, bright lights, stuff like that. And the most important thing about this is that it's being completely ran and planned by the sophomore and freshman class board along with some help from the junior class board. We think that it's really important to have and give opportunities to these underclassmen to help plan these big events. Of course, this event, hopefully, but it won't be as big as homecoming. We hope it will be, but we obviously know after homecoming, the, I guess, the theme and the fun and the hyper, hyperness around dances kind of dies down. But giving those underclassmen that opportunity to build those leadership skills, build those, build those skills to try and plan these big events, that's very important to us at Concord, because as we know, we're graduating in almost, almost a month, and the time really went by. And we want to give the opportunity to those newer generation of leaders to actually exercise those skills. And last but not least, I want to congratulate Mr. Kyle Gaffney for being a finalist of the Newcastle County Counselor of the Year. So congratulations to him. And yeah, before we get into questions, I kind of just want to emphasize that school inclusivity theme that we're going for Concord. Again, it was really surprising seeing that after these efforts we've been sharing with the school board that the community and school inclusivity is still not there. Of course, this is gonna be a big problem. That's not gonna be fixed over one year or two years or three years, but we definitely want to build that foundation and make a dent in that problem. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick question on your survey. How many students participated in that question survey?
So the question survey, so we had thirty to forty participants in circle talks, and around, I want to say twenty to twenty-five students actually participated in the survey.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for reminding us about Ramadan that's gonna be starting this week, and I just want to wish everybody in the community who is going to be observing Ramadan to have a, to have a wonderful time of reflection during this time.
I just want to say I like how you guys have stepped it up with the PowerPoint presentation. Nice job with the visuals, and also excellent job to both of you in your participation in Joint Student Council. You guys are definitely leaders in that group, and you can see you guys are gonna, when you leave B S D, you're gonna be doing great things. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as always with our high school students, we know you have other obligations, so if you need to step out, certainly do so, but you're always welcome to stay. And Mohammed has given us a nice segue to our next agenda item for special recognition, State Counselor of the Year nominees, presented by Dr. McKinney.
President Scrobob, Vice President Heller, members of the Board, Superintendent Holer, those of you who are assembled here and those of you who are joining us virtually. My name is Dr. Yolanda McKinney, and I'm here tonight to honor seven B S D counselors who were nominated for Delaware School Counselor of the Year. At this time, I would like to ask those counselors who are present here tonight to please join me on the stage. I think I see four of them. You guys can give them a round of applause as we come. And just please stay, because I have words for you two. Just trying to give you all your goodies. So I've had the pleasure of working with our school counselors in this capacity for the past three years. To say they are some of the hardest-working members of the school, the school community would be a gross understatement. So with that being said, the National School Counseling Week two thousand twenty-three was recognized February sixth through tenth of two thousand twenty-three to focus public attention on the unique contribution of school counselors within U.S. school systems. National School Counseling Week, sponsored by the American School Counsel Association, highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated the first full week in February. This year, there were seven B S D counselors nominated for Delaware School Counselor of the Year. Ms. Laura Becker from Lancashire, Ms. Susan Gould from Lombardi, Susan Holman from Brandywine, Craig Joseph from Brandywine, Lauren Kaplan from Springer, Dr. Ayman Turner from Mount Pleasant High School, and Kyle Gaffney from Concord High School. I will start by telling you a little bit about Ms. Laura Becker, who happens to be with us tonight. So Ms. Becker began her career at Lancashire Elementary in nineteen ninety-one. She has been an integral part of every initiative. Ms. Becker possesses great communication skills. She listens attentively to her students, families, and staff, and helps each group develop a plan of action that will be beneficial. Ms. Becker has served as the Positive Behavior Support Facilitator, and in this role, she collaborated with staff to develop the Behavior Matrix Reward System and provided lessons. Ms. Becker wants our students to know that one of their roles in life is to help others. She facilitates food drives as well as raises money for the Ronald McDonald's House and Share Night. Ms. Becker is a tremendous asset to the Brandywine School District and to Lancashire Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Becker. Ms. Susan Gould. Susan Gould can't remember a time in her adult life that she wasn't drawn to supporting kids' mental health. Talking with and not at kids, really listening to their thoughts, understanding, and guiding them socially and emotionally has always been her passion. She worked in psychiatric hospitals and did weekly therapy with children in other settings as well. She has worked as a school counselor with B S D for a total of nineteen years, beginning at P S, when it was P S Dupont Intermediate, and then Lombardi Elementary. Ms. Gould feels that in addition to formal counseling in her office, there are endless opportunities all day long to really build relationships and support kids informally throughout her day. Congratulations, Ms. Gould. Susan Holman, excuse me, couldn't be with us tonight, but I am still gonna read a little bit about Ms. Holman. Ms. Holman is Brandywine High School's College and Career Counselor. She's been in education since two thousand and five. Susan has taught kindergarten and middle school math before finding her permanent home at B H S. A counselor at B H S says twenty fifteen, Susan has always been passionate about students having a plan after graduating. Susan has developed a program as B H S's first college and career counselor. She was most recently named to the faculty for the National Association for College Admission Counseling as part of their Emerging Leadership in College Counseling Program. Congratulations, Ms. Holman. Mr. Craig Joseph is a school counselor for last names A through K, grades nine to twelve at Brandywine High School. He's been in education for fourteen years in three states and has worked in nonprofit organizations. He's also worked as a substitute teacher, and currently he is the secondary school counselor at Brandywine High School. Becoming a school counselor was a dream Mr. Joseph pursued from the beginning of his career as an educator, and he loves every day that he gets to connect with his students. It is his passion to be a resource to those around him. For him, every day since starting this position has been confirmation that you should chase your dreams. Congratulations to Mr. Joseph. Lauren Kaplan has been a school counselor in the Brandywine School District since two thousand and ten, with ten of those years spent working with students at Springer Middle School. Lauren has a true love for middle school students and a special gift building relationships. There are countless days when students return to see Lauren and thank her for all she did for them in middle school. Lauren's true focus is on what children need, from basic needs to emotional needs. There is not any roadblock that Lauren allows to stand in the way of her students' success. Springer Middle School is grateful to have Ms. Lauren Kaplan. Congratulations, Ms. Kaplan. Dr. Ayman Turner is a great school counselor because he embraces the term comprehensive. For the past seventeen years, Dr. Turner has helped students focus on academics, career, and social-emotional development with the agenda of leading students to live productive and fulfilling lives. He has done this by steadfast focus on the needs of each individual child. You might call him Dr. Turner teacher, counselor, mentor, leader, listener, parent, coach, or support person. Regardless of the role placed upon Dr. Turner, he implements and uses skill to successfully complete the task. Congratulations again, Dr. Turner. And finally, we have Mr. Kyle Gaffney. Kyle is in his tenth year serving the Brandywine School District, including nine years at Concord High School. Mr. Gaffney truly loves collaborating with all students and staff at Concord. Mr. Gaffney's greatest joy comes from genuinely connecting with each individual student. Mr. Gaffney seeks to understand the whole person and to build connections that last beyond each student's four years at Concord. Mr. Gaffney previously served on the Delaware School Counselor Association State Board for four years. He lives by the philosophy, be a good person. Mr. Gaffney was selected as a finalist for the School Counselor of the Year. The winner will be named later this spring. Congratulations and good luck to you, Mr. Gaffney. And I'd just like to say a special thank you to all of you, and you guys are just another reason why I'm proud to be B S D. Congratulations again.
Great, next up, we have P S Dupont Middle and Mount Pleasant High School, recognition for teacher, educator, support professional, and Behavioral Health Professional of the Year, presented by Ms. McIntyre and Mr. Wicker.
Good evening, President Scrobob, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holer, members of the Board, and all of you awesome folks in our audience this evening. You get to join us, Mr. Wicker and I, in celebrating some very, very important people in the Brandywine School District. I would like to invite to the podium at this time Dr. Marlinda Tartaglion, Mr. Price and Princillus, and I believe I see Dr. Mickey Highland, please come on up so that we may celebrate your three recipients for P S Dupont Middle School. And as they are coming and prepare to share some comments, I would also like to invite up Teacher of the Year, Ms. Awesome Megan Davis, Ms. E S P of the Year, Mr. Paul Essel, and Behavioral Health Professional of the Year for P S Dupont, Ms. Awesome Jill Mills.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Holer, and community members. It's great to see you this evening. So this is a super exciting time, and we are very honored to be here with our award winners. Mrs. Davis, our Teacher of the Year. We are very lucky that Mrs. Davis is our Teacher of the Year at PS. Have you ever met someone and thought that they just sparkle? Well, that is Ms. Davis. She is one of those teachers who will stand out in the memories of her students. She is energetic and has a dramatic flair that sparks joy and enthusiasm in her classroom. You could feel that she believes in her students and that she is there to support them. Ms. Davis is prepared, intentional, and driven. Previously, she was the business education teacher at PS, doing an amazing job with all of her students, taking them to BPA Nationals even for several years in a row. This year, she is a special education teacher, co-teaching an ELA, and continues to sparkle, continuing to make an amazing impact in the lives of her students. She shines, and we are proud that she represents us as our Teacher of the Year. Mr. Estle is our Education Support Professional of the Year, and when you meet Mr. Estle, you know right away that he goes all in to make sure students, his students, our students are successful. Mr. Estle is a paraeducator in our BSAP and ILP program, working with students with autism and other severe disabilities, which tells me right away that he has the heart that we need. Because we did not have a teacher at the beginning of the school year, Mr. Estle accepted the responsibility to lead the class and did so with great success, making sure all of his students were learning and growing each and every day. Mr. Estle is also the girls' basketball coach and assistant track coach, and builds strong relationships with all of the students in the building. He is always ready to pitch in, and every day he asks me how he can help. He is truly caring and a supportive professional, and is very deserving of this honor. And Mrs. Mills, our Behavior Health Professional of the Year. She is one of our counselors, and like all counselors, she is a true magician and makes everything happen, and she makes that magic happen on a daily basis. Some kids think that it's all about schedule changes, and so that's kind of like the inside joke, but honestly, Mrs. Mills is an indispensable part of our system and our school. She supports our students and staff, finding resources for our students, running groups, running testing, leading the yearbook. The list goes on and on, truly. She is the kind of person who has done something before you even know that you need it. So like I said, Ms. Mills is a true magician with a professionalism, dedication, heart, and wisdom, and that is why this has earned her the honor of our Behavior Health Professional of the Year.
Can we have one more round of applause for these awesome individuals? And next, I would like to invite to the podium Principal Lacy from Mount Pleasant High School, and she has her entire entourage with her, so I can introduce them as they are coming. All three of her APs, I believe I saw this evening, Mr. Tiff McCullough, Mr. John Norton, and Mr. Keith Roth, as well as her three deans of students, Mr. William Wells, Mr. Brian Hines, and Ms. Nidra Callaway. So they are coming up to celebrate their three recipients this evening, and if you all want to go over, Mr. Wicker will give you some things to hand out. We would like to invite up and celebrate Ms. Tara Pritchett, the Teacher of the Year for Mount Pleasant High School. Ms. Danielle Drake, the Educator Support Professional of the Year. And Mrs. Rachel Herkowitz, the Behavior Health Professional of the Year.
Good evening, President Scrobop, Superintendent Holer, Board members, educators, BSD community, families, and guests. I am Mrs. Calderon Lacy, Principal at Mount Pleasant High School. Along with my administrative team, we are here to celebrate the Mount Pleasant High School Educators of the Year, beginning with Ms. Tara Pritchett. She teaches English Language Arts at Mount Pleasant High School. As a teacher in the International Baccalaureate Program, she develops the foundation for the IB philosophy for her ninth grade students. She is extremely favored by her students for her energetic and very thought-provoking lessons that challenge students to be critical thinkers as they interpret culturally-inclusive content. Classroom teacher is only one of the many crowns Ms. Pritchett wears. She is also a leader of various student programs, serving as the advisor for the Black Student Union, Girls Empowered, and leading the charge as one of our school's equity champions. She collaborates and designs programming and professional development that encompasses the needs of our diverse student and teacher community. Join us in congratulating Mount Pleasant High School's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tara Pritchett, the most likely to change the face of education, Delaware's top 40 under 40 of 2013, Delaware's top teacher in 2020, Ms. Tara Pritchett. Ms. Rachel Herskowitz has served as an educator for the last 18 years at Mount Pleasant High School, my counterpart in scheduling, my right hand. She is dedicated to students and is an advocate for educational leadership. She is also constantly focused on the needs of the students. Ms. Herskowitz is committed to assuring that our students have a college and career plan upon their transition from high school to the real world, as we call it, adulting world. Rachel's commitment and dedication to teaching and learning is focused on granting students access to the best academic tools and resources to support their learning. She established high standards for the students who faced some of the most challenging experiences through their high school career. Her efforts in supporting students is demonstrated in her coordinating of the quiet lunchroom, an area for students with anxiety that serves as a safe space for them to be able to eat their lunch. Noting that many of the students with anxiety struggle with the large crowd in the cafeteria, she's developed a quiet space where counselors can support students daily and making them aware of their resources to quell the triggers that they have related to anxiety. Join us in congratulating Mount Pleasant High School's Behavioral Health Professional of the Year, Ms. Rachel Herskowitz. Danielle Drake, Ms. Danielle Drake, has worked at Mount Pleasant the last five years supporting students and staff in our special programs for students with disabilities. Ms. Drake assists the three lead teachers in special programs along with the other support staffs. From time to time, she steps in to lead instruction when a teacher is out, supporting the students with instruction and social-emotional wellness. As a result of her flexibility to support instruction, she has developed a great rapport with her students in special programs. She engages them with continuous life skills to help them facilitate through their daily routines. She is consistently reliable and extremely passionate about providing her students with the supports they need to be successful. Over the years, Ms. Drake has worked with students and staff throughout the building as a mentor and advocate, with some of her mentees here in the room. Ms. Drake is also an assistant coach for girls' volleyball and girls' basketball. Please join us in congratulating Mount Pleasant High School's Educator Support Specialist, Ms. Danielle Drake.
Congratulations once again to all our nominees and those being recognized this evening. Thank you for all you do for the Brandywine School District. Next up, we'll have a presentation on our Elementary Basketball League, presented by Ms. Jones Davis.
Good evening, President Scrobop, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holer, distinguished Board members, families, friends, and staff. It is my wholesome pleasure to introduce this special recognition this evening of profound leadership and role models for all of our young scholars. At this time, I'd like to bring to the stage Dr. Avery Sherrod and Jessica Crawford. As they come up to the stage, prior to the pandemic, we had a robust elementary, you can stand right there, a robust elementary basketball league. Yes, a league for our young elementary students to basically learn foundational skills in basketball and cheerleading. This league was founded by Ed Burks, Chris Romano, and Brian Winchell. During the pandemic, the league was placed on hold. After returning back to school full-time, there was a high interest for the league to return. We needed someone to step up to organize a league once again. I want to give a special thanks to all of our cheerleading coaches, our basketball coaches, volunteers, our PTA, the facilities department, and our building engineers who stepped up to support the Elementary Basketball League. Thank you, parents and families and the community for your support. In order for this league to reset, we needed leaders who had an interest and knowledge of basketball, organization skills, and most importantly, a passion to work with children. This evening, the Brandywine School District would like to give distinct honor to these two individuals who are exemplars in their commitment to organizing an opportunity for students to take part in elementary basketball. I would like to present to you Jessica Crawford and Avery Sherrod. Avery is a Dean of Students at Claymont, and Jessica is a Dean of Students at Lombardi. I'd like to give you a little bit more of the information about Jessica. Ms. Crawford has been playing basketball throughout her school career, high school at St. Elizabeth and Eastern University. Ms. Crawford shared that EBL provides a place to teach the fundamentals of basketball while instilling the importance of being a team member. Many of her life lessons were learned from being on a team. Dr. Sherrod, BSD graduate from Mount Pleasant High School, letter in basketball as well, played Division Two in college, coached Mount Pleasant High School basketball, Brandywine High School, and Goldie Beacom College as well. Avery shared, "I saw this opportunity to revive EBL in an effort to promote student developing fundamental basketball skills, positive peer socialization, sportsmanship, and promote an active play." Congratulations for giving your time, commitment, leadership skills, and answering the call from our students and families. You are examples of why after-school activities help to enrich the lives of our students. Thank you for your commitment to the league. I'd like to actually read the certificate that they will be receiving. Certificate of Special Recognition. This certificate that Avery Sherrod and also Jessica Crawford is awarded, this certificate of special recognition for your support and effort in coordinating the elementary basketball team. We truly appreciate you and thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
That will lead us into our superintendent's report, Mr. Holer.
President Scrobop, Vice President Heller, members of the Board, and members of the audience, I have another report filled with amazing achievements and accomplishments showcasing our students and our schools. I want to start with another update about the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. I am thrilled to share that Mount Pleasant High School student, Leila Cotman, has been selected to serve as the Student Representative for Brandywine School District. Leila is being paired with Reverend Perry, who will serve as her mentor. Leila now serves on the council alongside two other students that were selected from Christina and Red Clay School Districts. Please join me in welcoming Leila to the WLC Council. Leila is actually in attendance this evening, so we'll ask her to stand and be formally recognized by the board. Our February School Board meeting took place early last month, just as Black History Month recognition events were starting to take place in our schools. During that meeting, I promised to share more about events that would be taking place throughout the month. First, I want to showcase Claymont Elementary School. During the month of February, in honor of Black History Month, the Delaware Historical Society displayed artwork created by fifth-grade students from Claymont Elementary. You may recall, the students created the portraits of the Claymont Twelve after learning about the fight for integration for Ms. Joan Anderson. The students participated in a ceremony at the Claymont Community Center, celebrating the historic anniversary in September 2022. At the end of February, students were able to see their artwork on display. We were fortunate enough to be there when the students saw their artwork for the first time. Let's watch. Meanwhile, in honor of Black History Month, Forward Elementary School recently welcomed visual artist Mr. K. O. Sims. Mr. Sims is a native of Wilmington who specializes in watercolors, acrylics, pen, ink, and pastels. He's created works across the Atlantic Coastal Region and throughout Delaware. Mr. Sims collaborated with Jerry's Artorama to receive donated art supplies for the children to use. The pieces that were created will The pieces that were created will now be on display in the Forward Gallery. February was also I Love to Read Month. This month-long recognition is a great way to instill a love of reading in students, both young and old. To honor the month, we asked our board members to join us for a day of reading to our students. We selected the book, "All the Places You'll Go" by none other than Dr. Seuss. You can see, there were many that had been, had been some props involved too. We put together this compilation video of the reading event. This weekend was the annual Robotics Extravaganza hosted by STEM Robotics. In all, thirty-nine different robotics teams played in three hundred and thirty-two qualification matches on eight different robotics fields. The weekend event took place at Tally Middle School. Special visitors included Governor John Carney and Newcastle County Executive Matt Meyer, among others. Awards were given to the top five teams, and there was also a Coolest Robot Award. Teams from Claymont, Forward, Harlan, Lancashire, Maple Lane, Mount Pleasant Elementary, and Brandywine Bots all took part in the event. Join us in congratulating all of the young robotiers who took part, and of course, join us in thanking the dedicated organizers, including Foster Shucker and our very own Vice President Jason Heller for all that they do. And we have another robotics team that has earned high honors. As you heard earlier, Mount Pleasant High School's JROTC Robotics Team, Team Eighty-Nine Oh Three K, is Delmarva Region's champion. The team will represent the state, district, school, and JROTC program at the 2023 Vex Robotics World High School Championship in Dallas, Texas. Team members include Alexander Morse, Captain Madison Viola, Martiana Olson, and Isaac Youngcourt. Join us in congratulating this team and wishing them the best of luck as they continue to compete. And on that note, now seems like a great time for a quick plug. For students interested in STEM and fine arts, we're thrilled to share that BSD is once again hosting summer camps. BSD's fine arts and STEM's summer camps will take place during the month of July. We have all the information about the camps on our website, right on the homepage. All of our BSD families are also, should have received an email last week from Dr. Kutch, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, with more details. Meanwhile, at our middle and high schools, course selection will begin soon. Our school counselors are working with teachers and students to determine course recommendations and course selections for next year. Families and students should stay tuned for more information. We'll include more information in our meeting recap, including a link to our high school pathways and other information available on our website. I am pleased to share that the Brandywine School District had forty-one, yes, forty-one students completed and successfully auditioned for All-State Ensemble. All-state groups are statewide auditioned ensembles for chorus, band, jazz, and orchestra, sponsored by the Delaware Music Education Association. All secondary schools in the Brandywine School District will have student representations, with the exception of Springer Middle School, who's got a very good reason for not being represented. They'll be in Orlando, Florida at the Orlando Music Festival during the All-State competition. We'll have more information about All-State performances and all the students who are participating on our website in our new and approved Visual and Performing Arts Section. Meanwhile, our middle and high schools are putting on amazing musicals right now. Brandywine and Concord High Schools, as well as Springer Middle, have already completed their performances. Brandywine High School students performed "Little Shop of Horrors." Concord High School showcased "Legally Blonde: The Musical", while Springer Middle School performed "High School Musical Junior." Still to come, P.S. DePont Middle School will be showcasing "Legally Blonde Junior: The Musical." Tally will be performing "Guys and Dolls: The Musical." And in a grand finale, Mount Pleasant High School will be performing "Frozen: The Musical." As you heard earlier, Mount Pleasant High School won the nationwide contest to be the only school in Delaware with the rights to perform this amazing musical. Again, you can find more details on how to purchase tickets on each school's website. Meanwhile, the Young Brandywine Art Exhibit is back, and this year, we're once again hosting our galas to celebrate. The elementary galas have already taken place. Next up are secondary. These special events provide the opportunity for each artist to bring their families and friends to see their artwork on display and connect with their fellow classmates. Please join me in congratulating all of the young artists who have worked hard on their displays, and again, they can be seen at the Blue Ball Barn. Our athletes aren't missing a beat either. To start, I want to congratulate Mount Pleasant High School's Unified Basketball Team for making it all the way to the DIAA finals. While the team may have lost the final game, they sure won everyone's heart and showcased how hard they've worked. Leading up to the final game, the semifinal between Mount Pleasant and McKean was broadcast live on MPHS's very super ninety-one point seven WMPH. Radio students provided play-by-play commentary for the game, along with interviews with teachers and other leaders about the importance of having unified sporting events in the Brandywine School District. We also caught a recent wrestling match between Brandywine and Concord High School. Meanwhile, students from Concord High School are participating in the hand-to-hand program with the DFRC, Delaware Foundation Reaching Citizens with Intellectual Responsibilities. And finally, I want to recognize the young lady in the bottom corner. Rachel Bockrath, a junior at Brandywine High School, won the fifty and the one hundred free for the third straight year at the recent High School Delaware Swim Meet. She also broke two state records, in addition to many other record-breaking moments throughout the season. Her times automatically qualified her for All-American status for the 2022-2023 school year. Congratulations, Rachel. As we transition from winter to spring sports throughout the district, I want to acknowledge all of our athletes and their accomplishments this, this year. Our faculty members are also being recognized. I want to start by recognizing Diana Rossi, who was named Delaware State Muse for the 2023 school year. The award was given by the Delaware Art Education Association. Muse stands for Masterful, Unique, Strong Educator. Ms. Rossi will be recognized at the annual national event coming soon. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Yvette Respous, who teaches mathematics at P.S. DePont Middle School. Ms. Respous was named one of this year's finalists for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, the highest recognition that a K-12 STEM teacher can receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. And finally, again, acknowledging Mr. Kyle Gaffney for his nomination as a finalist for the State Counselor of the Year. I join with Dr. McKinney and everyone else at BSD wishing Mr. Gaffney the best of luck. As always, this report reflects a mere snapshot of the awards and recognition our school, students, and staff receive. Tonight, I'd like to share a brief update regarding school choice. The deadline for families to accept their school choice invitations was last Friday, March seventeenth. Now that those selections have been finalized, as the district will begin to take a look at waitlists at all of our schools while considering our building capacities. Finally, I'd like to share a snapshot of our district happenings. You know the caveat, this is just a glimpse of all that is taking place across our district. We start with Carcroft Elementary, where the school's recent Hop-a-Thon event netted more than twenty thousand dollars. What an amazing and impressive fundraising accomplishment. As a district, we also recently recognized Spread the Word Day. Staff and students in schools across BSD were all unified and spread the word about inclusion while wearing their Special Olympics shirts. Brandywine High School is celebrating two amazing accomplishments. First, the Brandywine High School has been named one of fifty state winners in the thirteenth annual Samsung SAW for Tomorrow competition, receiving a twelve thousand dollar prize package. SAW for Tomorrow is a national competition that challenges US public school students in grades six to twelve to explore how the role of science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM, can play in solving some of the biggest issues in their local communities. Brandywine's High School's project is led by Dr. Judd Wagner. The students are working to develop and test assistive technologies. Brandywine's team of young engineers are hoping to make a difference for the six percent of Delawareans with independent living disabilities. Next, we'd like to spotlight student Malte John, who presented at the twenty-eighth Annual Newcastle County Science Fair. Malte won her division and will now move on to the Regional Delaware Valley Science Fair, which will be held at Drexel University in April. Brandywine High School also had a special visitor. Drama students at VHS participated in an in-person acting masterclass facilitated by Marky Ca. Abrey from the touring production of "Come From Away." The visit was organized by Mrs. Lorne Anderson. Meanwhile, Concord High School recently hosted three of BSD's Spanish interns. The interns worked with our district-supporting Spanish immersion classrooms. The visit allowed the interns to see and experience an American high school and gave the students the opportunity to ask questions about the culture and language. Forward Elementary School recently had a visit from the STEM Queen, who showed off captivating science experiments. BSD's Joint Leadership Council recently held another meeting. These meetings bring together student leaders from all three high schools. This year, the group partnered with the B-Positive Foundation to share an important and emotional message about the importance of being in this together. BSD lifesavers are still hard at work. The high school students in the program recently became CPR and AED certified, thanks to help from our current UAD nursing students. Mount Pleasant Elementary held a Math Night event, which brought in hundreds of families for the fun math-related activities. District-wide Coral Fest recently took place. Photo here was taken during Lombardi Elementary's performance. And Springer Middle School had a very special visit from a composer. The Spring Jazz Band will be working with composer/arranger Mike Kumpf on his latest arrangement. District-wide, our instructional technology team coordinated a digital learning summit for all of our staff members. The day featured dozens of learning opportunities, including presentations from some of the major vendors that are used for learning technologies. The event featured keynote speaker from Dr. Rachel Karchmerkirk-Klein, who served as the Associate Professor from the University of Delaware. Maple Lane is one of our latest elementary schools now have a garden in collaboration with the organization Healthy Foods for Healthy Kids. All students in grades K to five will participate in classroom lessons based on next-generation science standards and will engage in hands-on activities to plant and harvest fast-growing vegetables twice a school year. Did also want to share that our district hosted the final Newcastle County Combined Boards of Education Meeting for this school year. The event featured a special presentation from founding members of the organization Attack Addiction. And finally, Board Member Reverend Perry has had the opportunity to read for our students, not once, but twice. In addition to taking part in the Dr. Seuss reading event I shared earlier, Reverend Perry also joined one of Harlan Elementary School's weekly bedtime stories. Rumor has it that Board Member Kim Stock will be joining another bedtime story event coming soon. With that, I conclude my presentation. Needless to say, there are so many amazing things happening in this district every day and right now. Easy to see why I'm proud to be BSD.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. Any comments or questions from the board? No?
Just one final comment. Mr. Scrobuck, members of the board, audience members, tonight, we say goodbye to a very dear member of the executive team, Danielle Pro Hudson, who sits right before us every meeting, who has served as our Public Information Officer. We are thrilled that Danielle has an opportunity to be employed in that same profession, working with schools and families and communication in her home district in Appicuitimac, where her two children, very young, preschool and kindergarten, are students. So we're thrilled that she has that opportunity, but very sad to see her go. She's been an integral part of who we are and just want to thank her publicly for her service to the Brandywine School District.
I'd like to do the same. I mean, Danielle's only been with us a short while, but some of the changes and improvements that you've made to our communications, our, you know, visual imagery that we put out there to communicate with our families, you know, has been so impressive in a short period of time. It is a big loss to lose, you so assume, but we get it. It is a great opportunity for you. I wish things were different, but we do. On behalf of the board, we wish you the best of luck. And don't be a stranger. You're always welcome back. Next up, we have our public comment segment. This is our time for you to be heard regarding topics regarding to the Brandywine School District. We ask, as always, that our speakers and audience members be courteous and respectful to each other. I will call the first speaker's name with the second name. I will call the first speaker's name with the second name on deck and we'll go through that list. And if you speakers come to the microphone in the aisle, that'd be appreciated. Time should start when you begin to speak and will end after two minutes. So, first up, we have Dylan Thompson and on deck, Kevin McLaughlin.
Good evening. I'm Dylan Thompson, back again. First up, Ralph, I want to thank you for reaching out to me after the L.A.'s meeting and Mr. Holder for having a meeting afterwards. But still hear about the safety. Another big fight again today, I think we're all aware. And I see things have been implemented, but it's still still not getting better. You know, kids are afraid to go to school. I have a fifth grader, you know, it leaves me with the ultimate decision. He will be going to Springer. You know, what do I do with him? But, you know, and it's concerning and it shouldn't be this way in our district where we live. We live in a great community and, you know, it's time to start beefing up security. You know, shortly after that, there was BB gun found in the student's bookbag. When's it going to be the real thing? That's my concern. We keep leading further and further and, you know, it's real disheartening. Everyone was here, all the parents last week, ready, ready to go. And again, it's me here again with my partner. And, you know, all the parents are sitting back, but worried about the student conduct. And like me and Mr. Holder talked about, I really don't care about the student conduct. I just want to see a safe school. If we have a safe school, we don't need student conduct. You know, you know what I mean? I just want the kids to get educated, like to see safety be more of a priority. You know, and maybe the board members have to be involved. I know a few of you have gone out there. I know a few haven't. I mean, we need to care about the school. It's middle school. Kids we're talking about, it's the foundation of their life. You don't nip it in the bud, it gets worse. And I just want to see a good, safe school for these kids. And, you know, I'm just reiterating the safety again. Thanks for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Kevin McLaughlin, followed by Renee Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Kevin McLaughlin. I started this journey back in November. Been to every meeting since then, except for when the Eagles were on Monday Night Football. But other than that, for the same thing, the last meeting, we had fifty or sixty people here. They were all on board and I wish they were all here again tonight. So, that meeting was on a Monday and then the BB gum was found that Friday. So, and I think within a week from that, I pulled my son out of school. So, my son is no longer, a straight A student is no longer a student at Springer. And some people might say, oh, you know, the good kids are leaving, but I can't sacrifice my son's education for somebody else's actions that are going on. So, with that said, I want to thank the teachers that my older son has, starting from Mrs. Kennel in the original Hanby. She taught my younger son also. My older son's now an AP honors student at St. Louis. He'll be graduating this year. He's got nine out of thirteen colleges. We're excited for him. I want to thank all the teachers that my younger son had this year. Mrs. Mr. Glazer, Ms. Romeo, I love you. She's a friend of mine. Mrs. Listum, Mrs. Favorite, Mrs. Carlson, Mrs. Duhadoe, and Mrs. Bonnie Wilson for getting him prepared for his transfer to another school. And I also want to thank Dr. Woodson for keeping my older son safe and my younger son safe as long as he could. I know he put his retirement. I hope that was on his own choice because maybe some other people on that board should think about their retirement instead of him. I believe he did a good job. I believe he didn't have his support system around him. You guys say about the schools not being managed, but you're in charge of the management team that's there. So, I just hope you guys take it upon yourself to fix the school before other kids leave. And I wish Dr. Woodson the best in retirement and I hope he sees his grandchildren in Tampa or whatever he decides to do. But I think he did a great job with what he was dealt. And I just hope you don't use him as a scapegoat. I hope you guys choose to fix the school and not blame him that he's gone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Renee Anderson, followed by Lilith Muzika.
Oh, I think I'm too short. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for all the volunteer efforts and the school efforts. I live in the district and had kids who are now in their late forties. But I'm here just to spotlight an opportunity. The environment's been an important part of what my life has been. And there's a grant opportunity from Energize Delaware for $500,000 per school district in this state for solar installations. And I see it as a good opportunity for some collaboration between students and people in the community to get together and work on a feasibility study of what this might look like. And I'm raising my hand to volunteer. And I know lots of people involved in Sierra Club and environmental justice activities. And we're willing to step up and participate in this happening for the school district. The state was given $15 million to encourage solar happening in the state. And it's available to every school district. There's a grant application that needs to be filled out. You can go to Energize Delaware website to learn about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next up, Lilith Muzika, followed by James Handy.
Hi. So, I'm back again the second time because, well, the response I received last time was not adequate, especially reactions of the board to other parents. Let me know that this board does not take things seriously in terms of safety issues. I'm going to be flat out honest, the issues with the elevators, the mold down in the music basement due to such severe moisture that the teachers had to go out and buy their own shop wet dry vac out of pocket. It's ridiculous. I don't think you guys understand it. The problems at all these schools, it's going to end up with blood on your hands eventually. Someone's going to get seriously hurt. I have asthma. There is mold in the tiles in the floor of the music basement because of all the moisture. I could have an asthma attack that could send me to the hospital because of this. The building is falling apart and saying that you'll just look when it's on the schedule is not enough. I have contacted the state about this now because it just wasn't enough what you guys were saying. I don't care when your refurbishment schedule is. These things are a problem now and they need to be fixed now. They are going to get someone seriously hurt now. I don't care what the refurbishment schedule looks like. If there is a severe problem in a building that could get someone put in the hospital, you have to fix it before someone gets seriously hurt, which is as fast as possible. The music basement is to the point where if they don't run the humidifier all day, every day to get the water out, it will become unbearable to the point where my lungs start acting up. I can't keep doing this. I'm a senior. It has been like that all the time I have been in the building. Nothing has been done. Step up. It is your job.
Thank you, Lilith. James Handy.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Holder, members of the board. You know me. You know, I rarely come publicly to speak on matters unless I feel there are circumstances that require it. And tonight, I believe that it does. For more than a decade, I have labored in service at Brandywine School District through two referendums as Chair of the District Finance Committee and through years of service as a parent at the student at the school level. In short, I have grown old and a lot grayer in your service. But tonight, I rise to say that I'm deeply disappointed in my district and in defense of my good friend, Dr. Tracy Woodson. I have had the honor of knowing Tracy Woodson for many years, including three years as president of Springer PTA. During that time, I was in the building weekly, sometimes more. I got to see him interact with the staff and students, a more outstanding administrator you couldn't find. Now, after an incident at Springer, Dr. Woodson has put his papers in to retire, originally at the end of the school year, but now at the end of next month. There is something deeply troubling to me that he has chosen to take this step and no way to treat a man who has dedicated more than 25 years to education. But this issue is bigger than Springer or Dr. Woodson. It is all across our district. We all need to do better and be better. We need to be able to be adults and discuss matters in a civil manner rather than a free-for-all such as we witnessed last month. This goes for the public and the board. We are at a tipping point in public education here in the BSD and in Delaware. The flight from the public school systems of those who can afford it won't help these issues. In closing, we all need to do better, the administrators, the board, teachers, the parents, and the kids. I've missed too many dinners and other family things over the years in service to this district to stand by and see it fall apart now. We are all invested in what is best for our kids. But we are tired. The teachers are tired. The parents are tired. Dr. Woodson is tired. I'm certainly tired. I realize that we can all come together and change and we would all then be able to again say we are proud to be BSD.
Thank you, Mr. Handy. That concludes our public comments segment leading into our board member liaison reports, starting with Mr. Ackerman, DSBA Executive Board.
The Executive Board met on March first. We did have a quorum. We talked about Dr. Marinucci's impending departure from DSBA as Executive Director. We also had Mr. Tony Di Prima, who is a member of the Capital School District Board of Education. He is about to retire as Executive Director of Energize Delaware. And we are actually eligible for about a million dollars in this district. There is a clearinghouse that these type of grants have to go through at the state level. So, Mr. Di Prima is attempting to do a kind of a mass clearing so that all districts throughout the state can take advantage of the Energize Delaware grants. So, that's kind of a, you know, the fly right now that's kind of slowing it down. But I think it's a great opportunity for Delaware. I agree with the lady over here who was talking about it. We also discussed the lead in drinking water issue that came up. One of the things that I don't think gets reported in the news is the fact that the Department of Education botched the first go-round on that. There are protocols that must be followed when testing for substances. You know, you don't just go to a faucet, open it up, stick it in a jelly jar and say, here you go. There's chain of custody issues. There's all kinds of things that need to happen to properly do testing. So, that is happening now. They have engaged with BADA Environmental at the state level to come back. I'm not sure exactly when they'll be coming to Brandywine or when we'll be doing it ourselves. But I think that unfortunately, the Department of Education got ahead of themselves and instead of, you know, talking to districts and trying to work it out, they basically put out a press release. So, egg on their face, egg on our face, not a good thing. The work of the Public Education Compensation Commission continues. Very good discussion amongst board members. I think we all agree something has to be done. I think it's especially acute in Southern Delaware, where literally, if you lived in Laurel, you could drive across the line into Maryland and start at $60,000 a year, which Laurel just simply can't compete with. In fact, we probably can't compete with it in most circumstances. So, and that's coming. So, there is, the governor has recommended increasing teacher pay as part of his budget. The DSBA is still advocating that we eliminate the $26 million gift back that we've been dealing with since the fiscal crisis of 2008. So, just for background for the audience, we get allocated funds from the state based on unit count, based on how many students are in the system. In 2008, they said, okay, we need $26 million back. They divided that amongst the districts and we had to look in our budget and cut money out. It's been added to every budget since then. It's still in there. Yet, we still see the legislature appropriating money and doing other things which don't really help school districts. And an example of that is right with the teachers and maternity leave, which is a great thing. But it really puts a hole in education when a teacher is out for multiple weeks, 12 weeks, whatever we're giving. So, they didn't really think about that too well when it came to schools. But teacher recruitment is going to be an issue. And I know that Ms. Stock is working on our committee to improve that. So, it is definitely something that the entire state is feeling. Our next meeting will be May third.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. DSBA Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon.
The DSBA Legislative Committee did not meet, did not meet since our last board meeting and is not scheduled until April 26. But I do believe that Dr. Marinucci will be collecting information and will be sharing it with us. And as I get it, I will be sharing it with the rest of you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. District Finance Committee last met on March eighth. I did not have the opportunity to attend. I know that they discussed the February 2023 Monthly Financial Report, which Ms. Floria will present a little later. And the next meeting is scheduled a little earlier than normal on April fourth due to the spring break calendar. Health and Wellness, no committee update this month. Maintenance Advisory Committee, I wish the young lady had stuck around a few minutes. Last meeting was held at Mount Pleasant High School. Kind of based on the comments that were made at the last meeting, we moved it to Mount Pleasant High School. We had one of the parents who was in attendance and raised some concerns. Also, a band booster came with us to tour the school, see some of the issues, specifically the lower level, the band and the choir areas. We walked through, we discussed some of the work that's been done to date and what work is still scheduled to be done, what some of the, you know, current mitigation factors are in place and what's needed for long-term capital work. So, we do keep it in mind, you know, student, teacher, employee health and safety in these buildings. And, you know, we're doing everything that we can to, you know, rectify current problems with what we can do in the short term. And, you know, we'll continue to do so. Our next meeting is scheduled for April fourth as well at 6:00 PM at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Parent and Citizen Advisory Committee, Reverend Perry is not with us tonight. Ms. Pigeon, Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, any updates?
Thank you to Dr. Warner, Nicole Warner, for sending me the summary because I wasn't able to attend our last meeting. It was held on March ninth at Claymont Elementary and it was also held via Zoom. And each student had, each school has an email address for BSD, which is going to be used for parents to connect with the school, parent council representatives who can serve as a sounding board, provide resources, connect them with others and give parental advice. This information will be shared in the upcoming months. Additionally, there will be a spring newsletter with resources, including a six-one-page topic-specific resource documents that were created by the parent council. The next meeting is May fourth from 6:15 to 8 o'clock. It will be held at Concord High School, also will be available via Zoom. There are other related reminders. Tomorrow is Rock Your Socks Day. Every year on March 21st, people around the world come together to celebrate World Down Syndrome Awareness Day by wearing brightly colored mismatched socks. And March 21st is symbolic because individuals with Down Syndrome have three copies of their 21st chromosome. So, it's diagnosis of trisomy 21. So, wear your mismatched socks to celebrate people with Down Syndrome and to raise awareness. And the Newcastle County School District's Transition Fair for individuals with disabilities is this Thursday, March 23rd, from 5:30 to 8 o'clock at the Chase Center on the Riverfront. Families and students with disabilities of all ages are invited to attend, to get connected. There will be presentations, various agencies, numerous vendors to explore. Agencies like DHSS and DVR will be there to help fill out applications and provide information for support services for families.
Thank you. We did not have a WLC update from Reverend Perry. And Leila was just here a minute ago and I was going to mention her name to coordinate with Reverend Perry for the updates, monthly updates, share her perspective as a student and possibly even connect with the Student Council representative if there's anything that she'd like to share in her experience on the WLC as the student representative. 917 WMPH met on Monday, March 13th. Kind of went over some of the activities that they've been doing. Level one students made new Black History Month audio research projects and are now interviewing local artists, journalists, and radio pros during the month of March. Level two made new BSD playlists with our very own Kim Stock, as well as Vicky Sorg and local radio legend Mike Rossi. And the level three students just finished a unit on journalism. And the Level Three students just finished a unit on journalistic ethics and on to writing for soundbites. Brandywine School District, specifically um WMPH has thirteen different audio products in the DPA High School Communications Awards. Uh, decisions are due out uh any day. And the After-School Radio Club continues to be better than it's ever been with six to ten kids attending every week. Uh, next meeting is not scheduled, it'll be sometime in the second quarter, later in the second quarter, and continue to tune into Super ninety-one-seven WMPH. Any additional board member reports?
Uh, just two updates, uh, since Reverend Perry isn't here. A group of delegates from both BSD and the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, um, which I joined on, went to Fort Worth a couple of weeks ago um for an Empowered Schools Conference, so we toured the Fort Worth Independent School District, has a similar partnership that we're looking to do with the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, where it's a um, kind of an oversight board overseeing certain schools that operates quasi-independent of the districts, um, so it's called the Land Learning Academy Network. So uh, we got to tour some land schools that were there, um, and there was a panel presentation by both the uh School District Representative Superintendent, but also the leadership of the LAN network. And um, I have to say, it was very curious going into it, but the way that they've implemented it has been outstanding, so um in Texas, they grade schools A through F, and the schools in the LAN network all went from F to A or B within the first school year, so um, so, so it's proof that the WLC concept um can work, um, so it's a similar concept, it was great to see it in person, um, so there was a group of us that were there, both from BSD and the Learning Collaborative, so really eye-opening and amazing to see how they implemented it, and how the kids respond, and we got to talk to kids, see classrooms in action, it was just, it was really impressive. Um, and then uh, also, since she's not here, the Parent and Citizens Advisory Committee is having its first meeting since COVID. I believe it's still scheduled for March thirtieth, um, and each building has identified parent delegates that will attend that meeting at Mount Pleasant.
Great, thank you, Mr. Holland. Anyone else?
I do work with Reverend Perry on the, on the uh Parent and Citizens Advisory Committee, and you are correct. It is on March thirtieth at six o'clock at the Mount Pleasant Elementary School Multipurpose Room, and this is our first meeting this year, and we are looking forward to it.
Great, thank you.
And sorry, one, one more thing, um, perhaps uh, from the Maintenance Advisory Committee perspective, I would be interested in maybe Ms. Anderson or someone presenting at a future meeting to the committee about how these grants uh from Energized Delaware could work for us. Uh, I think it would be a topic that I'm sure Mr. Reed knows about, but I think the committee members on the Maintenance Advisory Committee would enjoy hearing about it, if we could maybe reach out there and find out how to set that up.
Yeah, I, I think it would be better to have Mr. De Prima or the new executive director who's about to come into Energized Delaware.
Yeah, yes, I would, I think that would be beneficial.
Good, thank you. Great, anyone else? Nope. All right, moving on to consent agenda, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, Personnel Report. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Stock, Mr. Ackerman's second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Taking us on to old business, uh, we have the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three elementary calendar adjustment, Mr. Holder.
This is for about members of the board, just a reminder that uh at our last board meeting, did a presentation taking a look at actual student hours at the elementary level. Of course, at that time, we didn't anticipate that Mother Nature was going to be as gentle on us this year as she has been. So we thought we'd have probably two snow days this year. We'll keep our fingers crossed that that doesn't happen. But based on the number of hours we were looking at, we needed to make some calendar changes, and I still would like to propose those this evening. Um, I would um recommend that we continue, and this is for elementary schools only, that we change the May fifth currently scheduled as a parent-teacher conference day to a regular day of school, and change May tenth for elementary, which is currently scheduled as a half-day PD day, to a full day of regular school.
Move to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Certainly, anything that adds instructional time, I'm in favor of. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, first read, Ms. Jones Davis?
All right, thank you. And good evening again. Uh, this evening, I'm here on behalf of the Calendar Committee to present the draft calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And this evening, I actually will discuss two versions of the calendar. In your packet, if you could refer to the left side of your packet, you have both a copy of the calendar, and also you can follow with me with the PowerPoint that is there as well, or you can refer to the screen. So this is the first read for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. I will come back in April after you've had a chance to review and seek approval for the draft calendar. This particular, if you could turn to the next, switch to the next. I'd like to acknowledge our Calendar Committee, I have a few members who are here today. I appreciate all of your hard work, and also we have several who are on virtually. These are the members who have been consistent in attending our meetings, most of our meetings have been in person, and also by Zoom or virtually, so thank you very much for your involvement. You will notice in the presentation, some of this information is just information to share with our viewers to let you know some of the resources and the requirements when we sit down to plan for the district calendar. We have to reference, of course, when schools are closed and the holidays and things like that. So I may not necessarily go and read every single slide, but at any time, if you have any questions or comments, you are more than welcome to stop me. And please, if you want to make note as we go on to the months of the ten-month calendar, please make notes and ask me any questions that you have. I wanted to share with you just some updates as you reference. This is considered six A, this calendar is very similar to the calendar that you have now for this year and also next year, six B will have a slight difference. School is in session the week before Labor Day, same way we did this year as well as last year. Uh, state election primary is also included in the calendar. We have made a change based on your approval of the parent conference for May. Changed the parent conference from three to two per year for K through eighth. We have, will have it if it is approved for October and March conferences. We looked at the data at our schools, and we have very low attendance during the last conference. So therefore, we wanted to use instructional time, but our teachers and parents will still be given opportunities throughout the year to communicate and have two-way communication regarding students' progress. There's also another means of communication that all of our schools are using for elementary class dojo and also postings in school logi, again, to maintain a two-way communication. This is just a reminder that we did approve last year uh Muslim holiday, and I just want you to note for the twenty-twenty-five school year, the holiday will fall on Monday, March thirty-first, and you will see that on the calendar as well. Again, this is just calendar requirements, you know, looking at the hours that are required by state for our teachers, it's one hundred and eighty-eight teacher days as well in our state, so we have to follow those guidelines as we plan for the calendar. Yeah, this is just a breakdown of the hundred and eighty-eight days showing you professional development days, professional responsibility days, and these are contractual days that we also adhere to when we are planning the calendar. So to look at the sample of our draft of our calendar, um, most of the days here are very similar to what we are following now in the current calendar. Just will make a few highlights on each month. So for August, just want to bring to your attention, again, we will have new teacher orientation, and then from August nineteenth through August twenty-second, we will have professional development, both at the district level, at the class level or a school level, I should say, and then teachers will have time to prepare their rooms. Uh, normally, there's like a take-a-peek night, giving families the opportunity to come and visit classrooms and, and walk throughout the school. For September, we have our state election primary noted there. Where school is closed, but teachers do come in for professional development. For October, and I will mention if there are any changes that we've made in the calendar. So for October eleventh, that is a state professional day. Please note that that date has not been set yet, so it is pending, it will either fall on the eleventh or the eighteenth. Our teacher-parent conference days, we have been alternating that between this, it has been as early as October tenth, but listening to our teachers, they are asking for a little bit more time to get to know the students, build relationships with the students before the conference. Next. November is the month that I'd like to talk to you a little bit about. So when you look at November, um, I think back in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, the board approved for school to be closed on November twenty-fifth and November twenty-sixth. District would like to revisit that decision. We are looking for additional instructional time, so we are proposing that on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, that schools are open, that students and teachers are present. However, we do realize that our community, our families are used to having off the entire week. The twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, they may participate in traveling, but just being useful, used to having that time off uh may be a little difficult, but families will have almost a year, year and a half to plan for that time. So when you look at November, some people may reference it as no-school November. You have right now where if you count the holidays, the week of or times that schools are off, the week of November through the twenty-ninth, twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, that's five days of school close, and then you have Veterans Day, Election Day, professional development. That's eight days that kids are not in school. So we would like to propose and give you some time for discussion to consider having teachers and students come to school on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. Now, I do want to add, that would only be increasing instructional time for the month of November. Overall, the students will still have the same number of days. So for that Monday, November twenty-fifth, we would move that to August thirtieth, and they would have off the Friday before Labor Day. And then there is another day in, in February, school would be closed. But when you're looking at trying to increase the instructional days for November, that would give us two additional days. Some, we've heard some comments, well, kids aren't going to really be focused while they're in school on the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth. Well, we would say that with our outstanding teachers and professional building administrators, we can definitely continue to make learning fun, and students would be able to learn through embedded fun on the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth, so that is just something for the board to consider and discuss. Next. These days are our typical days all for the winter break, nothing really has changed there. For January, that is also consistent as well, really no changes there. For February, now I could show you the second six-B calendar, but I can also just share with you. See the February tenth? That would be the second day that school would be closed if we are going to consider students coming back on November twenty-fifth and November twenty-sixth. Remember, the first school day closed would be August thirtieth, and the second would be February tenth. Now, some people ask why February tenth? Well, someone, a group of individuals suggested that Super Bowl, that if we win the Super Bowl, you wouldn't have to take off, the day is already off for February tenth. But again, that could be up for discussion. Some people prefer February fourteenth. Next. For March, please note that typically, the parent-teacher conference is in February, but if we are omitting the last conference, then we move that, the last uh conference, which would have occurred in May, we move the conference down to March for our parents. And please note for March thirty-first is the holiday, Muslim holiday, which was approved last year. April, we have our spring break, which is pretty consistent. And for May, we have our half-days for exams for seniors and Memorial Day. Uh, and again, for the May conference, low attendance, we've decided to um just omit that, but still open opportunities for parents to communicate with their teachers, students, teachers. And for June, again, pretty consistent, last day, Teachers' Day, would be June eleventh. Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the calendar? Again, this is the first read, I can go back on any month that you prefer.
I know this is just a discussion, but briefly, from looking at this, um, I I don't like the idea of moving a day off to August thirtieth. Um, because we've consistently been told how difficult it is to get into a routine at the beginning of the school year, and so a five-day week. Um, we've, we've, you know, that's kind of what the teachers have said, that, you know, to start out with a five-day week, get in that routine, and then come back after Labor Day, and um, to me, that would seem important. I also, um, I guess I don't see, I totally hear what you're saying regarding November and not having. Um, I, I just feel like the families that would be able to be going on vacation would probably still be going on vacation, and the students wouldn't be there. And so it's going to lead to kind of chaos during that week.
And why chaos? Tell, tell me what you mean by that.
Well, because not chaos, but like kids that aren't there, an inability to kind of complete a full lesson and complete, because you would have families that are used to taking the full vacation or going and visiting family for the full week. I, I like the idea of having a full week for families and childcare centers who have been planning. I, I hear you with the year and a half in advanced notice. But, um, so those would be my concerns is, is getting a full week and keeping a full week of vacation, of, of time off, not necessarily vacation, but of students, because I, like I said, I think that you create opportunities, like families that need to travel to visit family are probably still going to be doing that. And so you'll have students, you wouldn't have full classrooms.
Okay, let me, let me just respond to, to the areas that you discussed. So as far as daycare, that is one of the challenges that parents often have. During that week of November, having Monday and Tuesday off, it is always a challenge to find daycare or for parents to take off the entire week. But on the other side, we have parents who travel a lot and they would prefer that. As far as the concern around, there won't be a lot of kids in the class, you would not go through a full lesson. Teachers would not necessarily do a full lesson. There is enough that has been covered from September to May that can be reviewed. Small group sessions can occur. There's a lot that can be done with a small amount of kids in the classroom. So I think we, that's why it's difficult, because for some parents, they enjoy that, that whole week. And then you have other parents that would prefer, and also some of the workers, like transportation drivers, would prefer to be in school and to drive the bus that particular Monday and Tuesday. And, and same as nutrition workers. So I think it is a challenge because it kind of splits right down the middle. But I appreciate your comments. Other comments?
Um, I do have another comment. Um, I, I do, as an educator, I do agree that November does tend to be no school November. It also does add to, uh, second marking period lasts forever because of so many breaks. And then it doesn't end until, um, you know, mid to late January. So it's a very, very long time to maintain, um, second marking period. So I, I, you know, as just as an educator, I do believe that, um, we, we do want to think about, um, what that means about no school November. I'm wondering if we had those two November days as instructional days. I think also as an educator, I find that fourth marking period tends to be the most difficult with, and, and largely because, um, both students, um, adults tend to not be as motivated during a fourth marking period and to carry it through, um, into, you know, I feel like we're, we're carrying it in later and later into June. I'm wondering if there's any way to, to just have students dismissed, uh, two days earlier uh, in June and end their school year, um, a little bit earlier when, you know, I know that there seems to be like several weeks or a week of like, um, field days and, and, and things like that. So I, I don't know if that is at all a possibility, um, if that might make a little bit more sense. Um, and I do agree that the community would have some time to uh, get used to the idea of two instructional days, uh, in November. But I would like for the community to email the, email me directly with your thoughts about this.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank you for the work that you and the committee do. It is a tough job. I've been in those meetings with you and it's not easy to get all the elements that you have to get into this. It's like, you know, baking a cake and, and, you know, making it all look nice.
Thank you.
But I, I do have to agree with Ms. Pigeon. I think, um, our district has become very used to having that week off, the entire week. I mean, I think at one point we also had the Friday before Labor Day off as well.
Yeah, correct.
So, um, I would almost go the other way of, of Ms. Stock and have keep the Friday of Labor Day off. And then we push the year out another day at the end, because we all, we end awfully early in Delaware. I mean, New Jersey is going to school through like the third week of June and we're like done. Graduating kids on June 1st, which is, it was insane. But I, I think we should keep the full week since that's something we've, you know, worked for in this district. And I think our, I, I agree that our, our community has become pretty used to it.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliment as well.
I just had a question on the requirements, if you can refresh my memory. So the student hours are minimum hours. The staff 188 days, is that a maximum? Is that a cap?
That is state.
That's a maximum though?
Yes. Yes. We cannot not exceed, we can't go over 188 days for teachers.
Thank you.
I want to thank you as well for your time and the committee's time putting this together. To me, the, the first, you know, people were talking about not having a full week the first week, add an end of the last week. In my experience as a student and as a parent, the first weekend last week are the probably the most unproductive weeks in school. Uh, I wish the state would fund it more because look at our proficiency scores. We need to be adding days to the calendar. Instructional days beyond the 188 throughout the state. And, you know, talk about, there's, what's the old saying that because we've always done it that way is the, you know, worst strategy. It obsesses me when I hear, and I heard it around the Super Bowl time, you know, the day off after the Super Bowl. And, you know, we're used to having a week's vacation. I, I think as a society and as education in America, we're putting the wrong priorities on things beyond the education. And, you know, if people are still going to be out and take the week of Thanksgiving, you know, they get their assignment, turn your work back in. I don't think teachers should be expected to teach the lesson twice. Focus on the students who are there. You know, if there are students who have less of an ability to travel, you know, maybe that's a time to give students extra attention that they need to improve in the subjects that they're lagging behind in. I, I think the calendar is fine as it's presented. You know, like I said, that first week of August, adding the 30th, you know, I, I don't think kids can't handle a full week of school that first week. It's a pretty easy week. It's, you know, graduated in with first and first through sixth, ninth and 12th, and then you get the, 10th and 11th show up on the next day. So it is kind of phased in. You know, Thanksgiving, yeah, maybe people will be ready to check out, but there's so few days in November. I'm for putting the extra days, so.
So you are for the 25th and the 26th for right now, for school to be open for, uh, the teachers and also the students. And the February 10th, we can change that date. We don't have to have February 10th. We can choose another day. That was just one reason, one rationale.
So I have a question. So which one is the recommended calendar by the committee?
So we, we have two. The first one is included with the full week of November for, for students and staff to be off. That's 6A. Your other 6B, if you could open that and if it's the pleasure of the board, we could look at 6B as well. The only difference is the November week. You can.
So I've looked at both of them. I'm just wondering which one the committee recommends.
Yeah. Does the committee have a preference or recommendation for A or B?
Whichever we would prefer. We just wanted to make sure for November, if you prefer to not have, to have school on Monday and Tuesday, I guess it would be B. It would be 6B where there's no school on that Monday and Tuesday.
No, not what we prefer. What, does the committee have a recommendation?
6B.
The committee recommends B, the old way with the.
Let's, let's look up 6B. I just want to share that real quick for you. 6B shows that Monday and Tuesday, schools are open. This is 6B. And we're just going to travel to November. See the difference? 6A, students and teachers are not in school on the 25th and the 26th. 6B, we are recommending that school is open on the 25th and the 26th.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I just, I just have one more comment. Um, I, I wonder, I, I know other school districts, they put the parent, uh, teacher conferences on that Monday and Tuesday.
Yes.
Um, and then that Wednesday does tend to be like a trade-in day as it is now. So then your instructional days would be made up then, uh, in October. Um, I, I know that that's not the tradition of what the Brandywine School District does.
And I can respond to that. So we have done some research with our super dis- sister districts. And it was not successful as far as parents attendance on the 25th and 26th. And we really, it is our preference, if we're going to have school open on the 25th and the 26th, students should be there instead of just teachers.
Um, I will say that in some districts that teachers are required to make a certain number of parent contacts to alleviate, um, the concern if parents do not show up.
But also if we had parent conferences, it would exceed our report cards, our last day of report cards, or they close that second week in November.
Kind of to that point, I mean, do you think over time, in, in my mind, that the improvements in technology and communications with teachers and parents with school, GE school emails? I mean, it makes sense to me to rely less on the in-person contact and use the two days, maximize the two days and then communicate throughout the year as needed.
Yeah, and, and that's an option. I mean, many of our parents, their preference is to have report card conferences by Zoom or, or virtually, because they just can't come in, um, in person. So that's an option as well.
So I guess I would just say my preference is what I would have said previously, but I would support whatever the recommendation of the committee has.
Thank you.
Comments, questions for me? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next up, Mr. Holder, Juul litigation settlement decision. Oh, sorry, skipped one. Mr. Rivera, had the wrong one checked off. Point 23, 24, Student Code of Conduct, first read, Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Lieutenant Holder. On behalf of the Student Code of Conduct Committee, I am honored to be joined by Warren Mays, who's an elementary teacher, and John Norton, who is one of our secondary administrators to present the recommended changes to the code for next school year. The Student Code of Conduct help promotes positive and supportive schools by providing guidance for a number of topics, including students' rights and responsibilities, attendance, alternative education, and consequences for behavioral infractions. I will begin by informing you on how we grounded our committee's work this year. First, we established ground rules and norms, knowing that these topics can be emotional and controversial. We had a commitment that we would bring to the board recommendations that had the consensus of the whole group. I'm proud to say that we've reached unanimous consent on all of the recommendations. Second, we spent time reviewing federal and state laws to ensure compliance. Reviewed Code of Conducts from other school districts and even universities such as University of Delaware. Much of the student code is straight from the state code. Third, we discussed everyone's role of a representative of this committee. The work of the committee was not only to be open and transparent, but the members had the responsibility to solicit ideas from their colleagues, parents and students. Fourth, we tried to be data-driven. We looked at research-based approaches. We analyzed different schools MTSS triangles to see, um, what was working in terms of the impact the code was having. Our thoughts were that schools have shown remarkable growth in terms of built and safe and supportive environments. We do acknowledge that the implementation of the code can be more consistent. And we do and have seen some pockets where staff, parents and students are not experiencing the same results as other schools in this district. And you may have seen the recent New Turner article discussing the rise of student misbehavior, not only in Delaware, but it was talking about the nationwide trend since returning from COVID. However, most Brandywine schools are not reporting that and the data is supporting that we are bucking this trend. The article noted that some people believe that this rise has to do with the shift from consequences to a restorative-only approach. I give credit to the work of this committee from years past before I came on and the school board for adding a layer of restorative on top of consequences. We never got rid of consequences. We add it to it. So, um, we spent time teaching students desired behaviors on top of given in a consequence. And lastly, for first-time low-level offenses, we encourage a teaching approach versus a punitive-only approach. We, we reminded ourselves to think of the situation as if it were your own child. We saw that about 95% of students at most of our schools had zero to one referral, meaning our approach seems to be working. Uh, the most common repeated offense that we are seeing is tardies, especially tardy to school. As I turn it over to Mr. Mays to share the committee members with you, I want to thank the committee for their dedication on this important work. Everyone who served on the committee last year was invited to return, plus we invited additional members to even be more representative. Also, anyone who expressed interest to us regarding the code or discipline or had any ideas to share, we're invited to join. People were joining throughout this entire year. Mr. Mays?
Good evening. At least one member of administration and teacher from each level, elementary, middle and high school, are represented on this board. District support to ensure perspectives around MTSS equity and special education. We have six current BSD parents as well. Members also solicited and brought back suggestions from all stakeholders. List of names include only those who attended in person, but more were included in those, in those original conversations. Our meetings began earlier this year based on last year's process. We have been meeting as a whole group twice monthly. We engage in individual and small group work in between meetings in order to be as efficient as possible. We have started to create a list of items to start our discussions for next fall and ongoing conversations.
Over the next two slides, we're going to highlight the proposed changes and additions. You're also board members. You were given a summary page in your Friday packet as well as access to the working draft document. And thank you for comments submitted. Uh, Ms. Adrian Stansbury was going to, um, present this next slide to us, but unfortunately she got ill tonight, so she sends her regards. So Warren volunteered to tackle this, but we may tag team this one a little bit as well. So thanks, Warren.
So the purpose, the Code of Conduct is one way to create and maintain a positive learning environment for all of our students. So the code and restorative. It is important to remember that over the past couple of years, state regulations have mandated that MTSS and restorative practices are incorporated into our schools' climate and culture. Over the past couple of years, we have added these important components to our code. As you will see again tonight, we did this without taking away consequences. Actually, we added additional consequences. A year ago, all of our secondary staff were trained in tier-one restorative practices on using community-building circles in their classrooms to build relationships with students. This school year, all of our elementary staff have been trained in tier-one restorative practices. Hence, we have added restorative consequences in addition to the already existing consequences to elementary consequences as we did in secondary. As we did in secondary language a year ago, excuse me. What this means is that students will not only receive a consequence for a significant misbehavior as a lesson learned and to deter future misbehavior, but in addition, they will now have a restorative component that focuses on teaching, with teaching the student the desired behavior and reflect on repairing any relationship that was harmed. This added component increases the likelihood of the desired behavior occurring in similar future situations.
The next recommendation, no, sorry, we're still on that slide. So thanks, Danielle. The next recommendation, no, sorry, we're still on that slide, so thanks, Danielle. Uh, came um based on the feedback of some students and administrators. This was changing the wording in the code that has a NearPod lesson to just a generic SEL assignment or project. NearPod is a digital lesson used to help students learn and reflect after some sort of infraction. The recommendation was not just to use this for uh, not to hamstring administrators to use only one tool or, or one um company. Um, the feedback has been that some of the NearPod lessons are phenomenal and very effective. Um, but some are more impactful than others. Um, we have also done some research on what other school districts are doing. Um, and this, a lot of the research was done around the vaping epidemic. Um, and they have done a lot more creative SEL-type assignments and projects for students beyond just a, a NearPod. And so we thought of giving administrators some additional flexibility that could be creative and targeted. Um, and maybe a more comprehensive assignment to reinforce a desired point. And then the last point up here is updating the attendance language in elementary to reflect our attendance language for secondary. Um, so currently, um, an elementary student would be marked absent under our student code. If they don't attend over half of the school day. In our research, um, we discovered that um other districts are not marking a student absent for the entire day. If um they don't attend over majority of the school day, um, our secondary language does not do this either. So we believe updating this one sentence in the student code of conduct allows the school to more accurately reflect a student's true attendance to the family and to the state. Also, remember that the attendance, the student attendance is part of the school's Delaware School Success Framework, the DSSF rating for the school.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm just gonna touch on a few uh recommendations um that the board will be making. In regards to changing uh some of the consequences as well as um. There were, please note that the board or the committee did not recommend to remove any of the consequences that we currently have. Uh, we have a strong belief in the um consequences that are currently there. But we do want to recommend increasing the first offenses uh in some of the areas. Uh, if you take a look at the first bullet point, um tobacco and alcohol, we've definitely seen an uptick in this in our buildings, um as well as across the district. Uh, currently, it's a state epidemic. Uh, Delaware is the third highest in deaths in the nation. Uh, when it comes to vaping incidences, uh, we will be working with the Health and Wellness Committee to uh help address these issues. Um, while we did add some additional consequences for the first offense, it should be noted that there will be an additional uh attempt to support a change and curb this behavior. Um, the consequences also include education and reflection that is going to be done by the student as far as the harms for to vaping and as well as alcohol use. Uh, the next bullet point touches on cancellation of privileges. And just to speak on this a little bit. It should be noted that there is an attempt to change, or excuse me, I apologize. The current administration in some of the buildings do uh cancel some privileges. And I just wanted to talk to that as far as if a student is serving a detention, a suspension, or an in-school suspension. Um, the additional after-school activities such as a basketball game and such should also be encompassed in that. Um, consequence as well, so they should not be attending that sporting event for that evening. Um, next up, we have the elementary suspension. Current elementary students in grades two through five can be suspended for lower-level infractions. Uh, the state is proposing changing this to grades four and five. Um, our committee did not concur or agree with this. Uh, but we do acknowledge that if the state does change the law, then obviously we will comply. Uh, we have researched adolescent development stages and behavior development. And the research does support that by the time a student is entering into third grade, they should be held accountable for the low-level behaviors. Hence, the committee did agree in updating the suspensions for low-level offenses and that again is starting in third grade. Uh, all students can be suspended for levels three and four, and that's across the board, including the um anything under the severity clause. Uh, next up, we have first defense consequence is also can be used for subsequent consequence uh consequences. In the code currently, uh, we don't want the administrator team to think that you have to levy a subsequent offense uh for a, uh, excuse me, a subsequent consequence for an offense. You can use something that is below that. Um, then we move to, we changed parent guardian notification to parent guardian conferences. Uh, we felt that higher-level offenses required more than just letting a parent know. Um, we wanted to make sure that we partnered with them and tried to work with them to be part of the solution. And lastly, we did fix a lot of the, I don't wanna say a lot, the ones that were there. Uh, some of, there were some typographical and graphical errors. Uh, some of the level threes and fours did not include uh out-of-school suspension, so we made sure that everything was uniformed. And uh, all the language uh that allowed, like I said, it goes across the board now from uh all the offenses for levels threes and fours.
Thank you both. Okay, so tonight we're doing our first read and we'll come back next month to um present um or have your final approval. And at this time, we're happy to field any questions or comments that you may have.
Yeah, it, it, just um looking at the draft, thank you so much, by the way, for all of your hard work and for your presentation. I really appreciate that. Um, I guess I'm referring to the draft that we have. And um, I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering, cause um I might need some correction in my, in my, in my observation here, in my thinking here. Um, you said that none of the consequences have been removed, that simply uh, that in some cases that there's been some addition of some MTSS um or some restorative practices. Is that correct?
So, I have my cheat sheet right here. So generally speaking here, the you will see additional restorative consequences added to all the elementary that will now reflect secondary. We cleaned up the secondary restorative language, so quite often you'll see in the consequences will have sometimes different wordings or like multiple restorative consequences under the same infraction. And we worked with our MTS coordinator to have a consistent wording throughout um all of them, so it may look like it was removed, but really what we tried to do is we tried to clean up and have that same language throughout. And so what you'll see quite often in Doc and Urin is in the bread, you'll see a straight through, but you might see something red written underneath that. It's just working to clarify.
Correct. Uh, so, so, um, so I did notice that um for the requirements, there's usually um, and I, I know this is generalizing, but it does look like that there's some kind of staff-student restorative conversation. Um, and then, I mean, is that correct, that, that in most cases we're, we're first, it looks like we're required uh to do the staff-student restorative conversation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, and then the optional, so these are just optional, when then would be things like um, I noticed, for example, for plagiarism, that it's optional for the student to receive um a thirty percent deduction. Um, are we already starting at a fifty percent in the district? There is no zeros anymore. Is that correct?
So, correct. So the, well, no, that's not correct. So for the market, at the end of the marking period, there's a fifty percent floor. On the report card, that is correct.
Okay, but individual.
But not for the assignment.
But individual assignments can be less than.
Correct.
Fifty percent, okay. Um, and so I, I, my, my concern, to be quite honest, is that um, although I really do appreciate the addition um of restorative practice as someone who does um, who does take part in those, um, I'm, I'm concerned that this feels a little bit like we, we've put a premium on the restorative conversations, which, I mean, we should. But I think in addition, I think that we need to also continue um with our with our menu of options in terms of consequences that are beyond restorative conversations. Um, I don't know, you mentioned um something about um, I, I, I forgive me about the wording, but creative. Um, or uh, that there was some optional uh types of uh SEL types, projects and things. And I don't know if that allows for there to be, um, I don't know, uh, uh, like some kind of work uh for the school community. Um, I don't know if that's included. Um, I'm just, I think that I'm, I'm stating my concerns in response to some of the feedback um, that we have received from the community specifically about our student code of conduct. And I'm wondering if we are, um, if, if this is going to uh, you, you know, cause some problems for us in the future.
Uh, it's an excellent point. So, the, the best way I can explain this. The, in terms of the consequences, the non-restorative consequences not only stayed, but we only added additional ones. So some of the additional were mentioned today. And then, on just about all the infractions, everyone had the SEL assignment and project that was added for almost every consequence, as well as that cancellation of privileges. Piece that was also added to just about everyone. So, um, as in an option, so it depends on the situation.
I also noticed, and I, and I, and I'm not finding it right now, but I also noticed, um, I think it's in the uh K to twelve level. That if a, um, that there was, I, there was a difference in between um a student, um, offensive, offensive touching um another student and a student um offensive touching a, a staff member.
That is correct.
Um, and it seemed that, um, is this correct, that in offensive touching of a staff member that they would only be suspended maybe two to three days? Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
I have to apologize. I do not have the code in front of me.
I, I'm sorry, I just, I was looking at this last night, so I just remembered.
It would be a suspendable offense.
Is there, and there is a limit on how many days that that student would be suspended?
According to the code and depending if it's first offense or second offense, but um five will be the max. Now, there are exceptions. Um, if we want to get into the nuance of it, so if the offense, for any offense, if the student, if the infraction then will lead to a recommendation for an alternative placement, then extensions of suspensions will take place and the student will remain out until the alternative parent will be held, which happens.
Like, my concern is that, I mean, this kind of behavior is existing um in our schools in which students uh, and I'm not necessarily talking about Brandywine schools, but I do know that this kind of behavior has been escalated um in schools. And so I, I just want to assure the public that in addition uh to the restorative conferences, um and to the restorative approach, that we are doing our best to take uh, to take these offenses, you know, very seriously. Um, my, my concern is that if a student were to, let's say, push a teacher against a wall or something like that. Um, is that students then able to come back in three days? Um, I'm wondering what that message is then to, A, to uh the community um and to other students who may feel like then, oh, well then if you just do that, then you can come back after, after three days. You're just suspended uh for, for a little bit of time. I'm just, I'm concerned, especially uh with uh some of the um, as you admitted, that after the pandemic, that the behavior um across the nation has escalated.
I, I think on behalf of the whole committee, we would strongly agree with you that that type of behavior will not and cannot be tolerated for a building, whether it's.
And I would think an example like that, criminal charges would be on the table as well for assaulting a teacher.
But even if the criminal charge, but even if the criminal, even the, the teacher would have to press charges, so.
Right, so also remember, at, at just before these, um, there's also something in there called the severity clause. So quite often, in like a situation if you just described there, would meet the severity clause. And then, and then we talked about far more significant consequences. Um, such as, is this um the correct setting for a student?
I, I have, um, I have two questions. One is the comment that I put in the board docs, which is regarding the, um. I'm sorry, I have to go back to the comment. Um, my concern about the cancellation statement. I feel like that's, that's, I, what Mr. Norton said, where, you know, if a student is on the football team and he has been suspended or has detention or something like that, he's not gonna participate in football that evening. So that would be automatically and assumed. So I feel like we shouldn't have it as an optional because that makes it confusing and it should be a mandatory, like if you are suspended, you don't participate in activities after school. So that would be my one concern, because I also think that there leads to a bias of if you're going to suspend somebody or give them a punishment and they're a star athlete and you know they have a state competition coming up, are you less likely to give them that suspension? If there's that ambig- ambiguity in, or ability to kind of be flexible, if you will, because it's an optional policy. So that would be my, um, like, we should follow academic probation procedures that are with the IAA and they're mandatory and they're, when we have students that are in, um, they should lose those privileges. I, I feel like, and everybody should know that they're not to be participating, whether it's in yearbook club or whatever it may be. Um, because I think that puts another level. If it's mandatory, you take that human element of like whoever's administering the punishment can't say, I feel really bad for you and I, you know, I don't want you to have to miss out on the play tonight. So that would be my one concern. The other is, I'm confused about, we've talked a lot about vaping. And in the categories, there's smoking, there's inhalants. Which it seems like it's defined as like blues. Um, and then there's drugs. So I feel like maybe we need to modernize the language to include vaping. And if you're vaping, are you vaping a tobacco substance or are you vaping a THC substance?
Excellent point. Um, I'll work backwards. Um, you're exactly right, and that's what administrator needs to process and think through. Most of the definitions in the Student Code of Conduct is literally copy and paste from state code. It has to be the state code. So as the state updates the definitions each year, then we update them um each year as well. Um, and then your example is a very good one as well. So if there was a drug in the vape, then it would be a violation, the drug infraction with those consequences versus if you found an empty vape in a bookbag. In terms of the cancellation, um, so, you know, Ms. Norton gave his example. Um, I, I think we, we agree, if I heard you correctly, um, I think part of the issue is that the code doesn't explicitly state that, that, um, that yes, if you have a detention, that means you can't attend this activity after school. Um, and so we felt like that was a protection for us and clarity for the students and families to know that that there's more on the table, more consequences or an additional um a consequence that can be given beyond just detention. It could mean that you can't attend something. Um, part of this also came from a conversation I did have with Donna Polk with DIAA. When we do have our athletic handbook and I was asking questions about your exact example, if you, and example you're going, Ms. Norton. And her very strong recommendation was that we needed something mentioned in our student code of conduct. Um, to support that if a student is an athlete, it's gonna be, you know, so you can't attend something because you violated. something because you violated this, then right now our code of conduct doesn't mention that. So we just want to be consistent and let that be known.
So I guess my preference would be for it not to be optional in each category, but a blanket statement at the beginning of all of the infractions or violations that says if a student receives suspension or disciplinary action or whatever, the consequence of that is they may not participate in after school activities, including athletics. So that would be like, it feels like it should be a blanket statement and not just an optional category. I kind of also feel the same way Ms. Stock was mentioning, like when you have offensive touching of a staff member or even of a student, if it's a two to three day suspension for the first offense and a two to five day suspension for a second offense, I hear you on that severity clause. I also just feel like it should be detailed. It's like, it should be definitive on what that suspension is. If you're going to offend, if you're going to have an offencing touching and you're going to punch a teacher or you're going to throw him up against the wall, whatever it is, you, and it's your second offense, it should be five days. It shouldn't be an optional two to five days. So I feel like we should have hard, fast rules on that. And it doesn't seem like a first offense being two to three days and a second offense being two to five days is adequate.
I really respect the lens of equity that I hear. From being an administrator applying the code, I would just say that there are so many different examples that can be given that sometimes given a little bit of room for an administrator to understand the situation is helpful, whether or not you're talking about a student with a sniffing disability or not, it was an accidental. Like the examples were given are, I think are, would be in the far extreme. I'm trying to even think if I've ever experienced one where a student did that without it being a severity type situations. So it's usually.
So I hear you on that. So maybe that's a one day suspension or a two day suspension for a first offense. And you know, maybe you don't have a five day option in that second offense. I guess I'm not hung up. I don't want to be hung up on like the number of days. I, I just feel like it should be a hard, fast rule of what that looks like for every student and every administrator in every building.
But, but I think you're getting into the zero tolerance area and we've been down that road and it didn't work out too well. I think, I think we need to, as Mr. Rivera said, give administrators some leeway, you know, send the messages aboard that, you know, we want to, you know, reel in some of these discipline problems and lean on the heavier side for multiple offenses. But I, I think to his point of there are so many scenarios you can go through and extenuating circumstances or mitigating factors that, yes, it may be a second offense, but it may not require the five days. Like you, I feel like you're giving the worst examples that would require a five day. I just don't think we can define everything in the code to fit every box.
I think I disagree, but we can move on.
I would agree with the point of, and I take ownership on this because I think that's part of my responsibility is ensuring a continued training for administrators to ensure that we're being consistent with the application code within the building and then across the district for common situations and to ensure the review and it through a lens of equity to make sure we're not discriminating against certain classes. 100% agreed.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that. It does say though, and with the offensive touching towards either an employee victim or a student victim, that this also includes or intentionally striking another person with saliva, urine, feces, or any other bodily fluid, knowing that that person is thereby likely to cause offense or alarm to such other person. I'm not, I, I don't, I don't think that something like that, if a student were to spit on another student, if a student were to go to the bathroom on another student or, or a staff member, I, I feel like this is not, that can't be taken lightly. And that is what it says. I'm reading it right directly from, from this, from the code of conduct.
And what indicates that it would be taken lightly?
It, I'm not saying that, because it says the suspend, the first offense is two to three days out. The subsequent offense would be then two to five days out.
But how does that fit in with state law?
So definitions are copied and pasted straight from total 14, section 600 for the vast majority. Any offenses that are suspendable offenses, the state writes the definition for these offenses.
Of what that means. And then, and then we as a district and we decide, then we have the liberty to decide then what would categorize as adequate discipline then?
That's correct.
Okay. So we as a district has said that if somebody, if a student has done this to other students, saliva, urine, feces, or another bodily fluid, that that is only worth the first offense, one to two days out.
If it doesn't meet the severity clause, but if it's offensive touches would be, you know, if a student who's running down the hallway and, and hits someone or playfully slaps someone, like things like that is the vast majority of what we're talking about here.
Correct. But, but bodily flu is like saliva, urine, feces. That is not just slap, actually slapping someone, you know, like accidentally.
The severity clause would apply.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Then.
And that's the discretion that we trust our administrators to use. So it, it covers everything from, it used to be popular a couple, 10 years ago to slap somebody in the back of the neck and then run. That would be offensive touching. Yes, what you described, slinging bodily fluids at anybody. Also by definition, offensive touching, but with the severity clause can be handled in a much different way than the playful, inappropriately playful slap in the back of the neck.
And usually follows with a criminal citation as well, by the way, which is a separate process, but is in addition as well. So note that.
So, Mr. Rivera, my.
Sorry, ma'am, ma'am.
So my question kind of goes between Ms. Stock and Ms. Pigeon, I guess. So we keep using the word optional, right? And I've heard some feedback, I think that at the building level, some feel there's not enough leeway to make decisions. And I understand there needs to be a code across the district, but I don't think anybody knows better than at the building level, the nuances and the particulars of the incident and the student. So my question before this came up is can you explain a little bit more about how the code allows the, at the building level to have flexibility to make these decisions and maybe to Ms. Stock's point, which I guess might be the opposite of yours is can we give more leeway to the people that know the situation better than anybody else to make the right decision in that case? Because maybe that window is too small of one to three.
Mr. Heller, I will actually, you know, kind of taking a look at the code. Situation I had this year was actually a student offensive touching of a staff member. Kind of drummed on a staff member. The staff member did take offense. Well, you know, thought the student was being malicious. Now, obviously that is a big difference than someone, a student punching a staff member. So with the optional and the two to five, you know, I do have the flexibility. I, I don't want to give that kid five days for that. And if you're putting a blanket statement across the code that mandates me giving him five days for just drumming on a teacher or a staff member, I, you know, I don't think that's being equitable in looking at this particular student's circumstances. So I mean, I, I appreciate the flexibility in the code so that I can work different options for students. You know, I look at number of days the students are now. Students with I E Ps, there, there's a bunch of things that come into play when I'm, you know, levying a consequence. Now, obviously with another student that is more malicious, I kind of tend on, I, I will lean on the heavier side, but I, and I know the rest of my staff in the building definitely appreciate the flexibility and the ability to work within the code and, and levying, you know, minimum days versus maximum days.
And so then one follow-up question about the severity clause. I, I haven't actually read the whole severity clause, but to address some of the comments tonight and last month, i- is there a way to add or address maybe in the severity clause that if the behavior impacts the learning of a large group of students, that that automatically increases the consequence. So if it's, if it's a behavior in a classroom and it takes half of the allotted classroom time for that behavior to be managed, that, that takes away from the other 25 students in the class, that that immediately elevates the.
Yeah. And what I'll do, I'll get the exact language, but it's summarizes as the admin discretion at that point for the administrator of it.
And, and is that discretion allows you to go above the number of days that are listed?
If it hits the severity clause, yes.
So I have a question. How, how are we making sure that indeed consequences occur? Because I know, and this is probably like a level one type offense where a detention was assigned to one of my grandchildren who were in one of our high schools. Yet they canceled detention three different times because they couldn't find staff to cover it. Yet I saw a whole parade of administrators up here tonight from that school. But yet that detention hasn't happened. So if you don't do these things when they're little and they're small, you allow them to fester and get worse. And I don't, I don't see where there's help. My, you know, my daughter says, I don't see where the consequences are. So I guess my question is how are you as an administrator going to make sure that the schools are actually doing what they're supposed to do?
It's a great question. Because that accountability piece needs to be there to ensure, or else if there isn't that consequence piece, then that behavior very well may be repeated and that's not what we want. So I think there are a few system pieces that are built in in, in most schools, that most referrals are administered by the teacher. So part of the contract agreement allows the teacher to smith refer, but also see the follow-through with the consequence and knowing what that is. Second, then there's the principal who should be following up at, with the referrals each day is, is part of the, the schedule making of the I S S, in-school suspension, detention schedules, and they would know if something's being canceled and what the plan is for being rescheduled. And then you have people like me who spot checks. And I've spent, including just last week, I'll go in and, and pull a whole bunch of referrals from a building at any time and meet with the admin team to talk about very much what Kristen was talking about. Say, let's see if we're being consistent with the application within the building and are we being consistent with the code, the consequences the code says that should be given? And are we using the right coding to begin with? So I think there are multiple levels from teachers and then of course, parents will also let us know if something has gone astray. So we have parents and teachers. We also have the supervisor for the administrators who, who give out consequences. And then we have the administration office who are looking at larger level as well.
I think at this point I am not ready to vote for this for next month. I don't know how the other board members feel about this. I do think that this has been an issue in the district. I think that at this point, I am not ready to vote for it at this point. I know we're not voting on it tonight. I know it's just a discussion. I am just stating what, what I am thinking at this point. But I would, I, I would like to see maybe some, not just maybe, I would like to see some of the research that is behind, is behind some of your decision-making for, for some of the changes as well as for this code of conduct. I, I mean, if, if you have any, I would appreciate that at all.
Yeah. And I, I think it's, if you, some of, the summary sheet that's in your Friday packet goes through all the significant changes and mentions the reason behind each of them. Though again, a lot of them fall under the, a graphic error or a print omission. I'm happy to explain any one of those further.
Would you be available to meet with any of the board members individually over the course of the next month?
Anytime.
Answers. Thank you.
And then I, I do also want to acknowledge, especially with Mr. Ackerman's question. Since, acknowledge the work you've done since you've taken over, especially with code of conduct enforcement, I think especially at the high school level, the consistency of code of conduct application is markedly different than it was in the past. So I do just want to acknowledge that, that it seems very consistent.
Thank you.
Any just members of additional questions as you read through the summary and the, the proposed code of conduct changes? Mr. Rivera can, you know, meet with any of us individually or certainly if you have specific questions or emails or scenarios you'd like to run through as to how the code of conduct could possibly be applied. For a specific situation, please reach out to him. And I guess if any revisions come over the course of the month for proposal for next month's agenda. This point will, this is a first read, so whether, you know, it'll be on for at least a second read, whether it becomes an action item or not next month, we'll, we'll discuss again. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Now Jewel litigation settlement, Mr. Holder. Prison screw about, I'll be quick. Several years ago, Brandywine was one of the 19 districts across the state that joined in a lawsuit against the company Jewel, known for producing vaping products. That court case has, has gone through the system and verdict has been rendered against that company. We received from the attorney representing us an opportunity to settle that. And based on consultation with other districts as well as our legal counsel, I recommend that we go ahead and, and settle. The amount after fees, applicable fees are applied will come to roughly $190,000 that the district would receive over the course of the next four years and installments. A portion of that money will be dedicated towards student programs around the dangers of vaping, alcohol, drug use, as well as professional development for teachers. Although other pieces of that, that funding are open-ended. So just want to bring that to your attention and hopefully get a motion to approve settlement of that lawsuit at this time. It is due April 7th.
Move to accept the superintendent's recommendation on the Jewel lawsuit?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussions? So, Mr. Holder, I guess the alternative to not accepting it is we continue with the class action and potentially get less or nothing or.
That is, that is a possibility. And that was why the recommendation was to settle now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Monthly financial report, Ms. Florrie.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board and the remaining public. You'd be happy to know I have the least interesting and most cut and dry presentation, which is a good thing for finances. In terms of revenue, we would, this is for the monthly report ending February 28th. So we were eight out of the 12 months in the fiscal year and you'd expect to be at 66.7%. On the local revenue side, we're at 97.5%. So nearly reaching our 100% goal and have a few months to get there and we will. On the state categorical side, we're at 89%. And on the discretionary side, state side. Um, and on the discretionary side, state side, we're at 98.7%. So all told, our revenues are 89.1% and right on target of where we'd expect to be. For the other smaller categories like debt service, um, and the tuition tax, we're in the 99% revenues received. On the expenditure side, um, right on target, 68.43% obligated. Um, and only 56.43% actually expended. So the, the difference is just that, uh, which is encumbered versus money that's left the door. So in strong position to maintain our budget going into, um, the, the final months of the fiscal year. The forecast, which is the last one, we spent some time talking about this. The forecast remains at, uh, for June 30th remains at 8.6 million. With the estimate or the target of 8.8, so not far off of that, um, and right on track. The moving into the, the questions about the referendum, questions about the, the future. The next two, as Mr. Scrobot said, our, um, April meeting will be on the 4th of April. Um, in that one, we will review the Newcastle County presentation on reassessment and look at that timeline. Um, and then at the May meeting, we will look at the three-year forecast that kind of does the long-term projections. And where we will start to have conversations this summer, um, along with Mr. Reed on the major cap side and then the operating side. But. The long story is, or the short story is, um, we're exactly where we should be.
You go back and screen, what were the highlighted yellow numbers, the 103% and?
They were two, yep. Those were the two areas that were, um, over 100% expended. Um, and we talked about those at the committee. One was actually Mr. Rivera's budget. And for, in a very good way. And that was because in his budget, the Torgow program is in there. That's the trip to Germany. And so the students spend, um, or pay for a significant portion of that trip. So he fronted that before the receipt of, um, all of the student payments. The other one is on energy and the total amount encumbered is the total amount because we were up in the number of units this year. Um, we also got additional division two or energy money. And so the full amount of state funds were encumbered. And so that encumbrance just needs to be, um, adjusted. So it's not overspent. It's just, um, we reserved all of the state funds. And so we have to look at, uh, the expenditures from the beginning of the year, um, and we'll adjust that.
And the negative number for Bush?
The negative number for Bush was a result of, um, prior year IDEA funds that were available. So we didn't need, um, any local funds thus far for Bush because we were able to use that prior year IDEA funds. So it shows a negative because we've been able to use all of that federal money there. So the negative means, um, less than, they've spent less than zero because all of it was spent out of IDEA. But yeah, I tried to, you know, put areas on there, um, where it would be outside of what you'd expect. And that's why I put them in yellow.
Any additional questions?
No questions. Just, uh, again, a thank you to Ms. Floria who's come in and grabbed the bull by the horn. And, uh, her expertise around school finance, uh, are clearly evident.
And it's the committee's recommendation to accept this report?
Yes, it was.
Do I have a motion from the board to accept the torn, February 2023 monthly financial report subject audit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Floria. General information, meeting dates, uh, as mentioned earlier, we have our parent and citizen advisory committee meeting. Uh, March 30th at Mount Pleasant Elementary School in the multipurpose room. Followed by our April regular board meeting, April 17th here at Brandywine High School. The May 8th, board meeting, Brandywine High School and the June 12th meeting, Brandywine High School. With that, I thank everyone for your time and participation and attendance this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, I had Ms. Pigeon motion, Ms. Stock second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.